We can't hear you.
Thanks, Jason. I just sent a chat message as well.
You hear us now?
Yes.
Sorry, the owl was muted. So much technology. So with respect to the consent agenda, I move to approve the November twenty seventh, twenty twenty three, non-public meeting minutes, as well as the December seventh, public and non-public meetings.
Second motion made. Is there any additions or questions? No. Okay, so the motion, Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
I vote yes. And revise itself and actually date care grant.
I move to approve an adult medical daycare grant dated December eleventh, twenty twenty three, in the amount of four thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-five cents to Silverthorne Adult Medical Daycare Center for an easy tilt rolling shower chair, two armors, and a wheelchair accessible to.
Second motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? This is a motion that was taken last week, so we've got a better feel for that.
Just thank you to Jason for following up and getting us the detail from Silverthorne. Wanted to make sure they got what they needed.
Perfect. On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
I vote yes. Count's payable list.
I move to approve the count payable, December fourteenth, twenty twenty three, count payable list total of three million nine hundred seventy-three thousand eighty-six dollars and sixty-six.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I can't support this, as unsurprising as it will be to you, because there are seventeen items in the warrant from Harvey for the building committee, the building expenses totaling thirty-nine thousand eleven dollars and seventy-three cents that have no backup, and I I'm uncomfortable with approving them. And I'm not going to go through all the details, but I just want to highlight one that really gets under my skin. One line item that we have is for three thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy cents, and all it says is American Express. I think this is an unacceptable way of maintaining integrity of the expenses, and for that reason, I will not be supporting the date we want.
I do want to, I just want to highlight sort of the reconciliation and what's taking place, and thank you to, for tuning in to Chuck for your efforts to give us the breakdown. Doug Jopery did do a, gave us a nice spreadsheet that had all the details about their work, and I just want to get the term right, because I'm sure I'm going to screw it up. But any, the point is, and I'll get to that in a second, the overarching point is, it was all cross-referenced. Everything is proper referenced and checked, and of this warrant, it's accounted for, where your your concern is a three thousand dollar expenditure, which is likely due to materials, and I feel very comfortable in the transparency that Harvey is providing us, as well as the all the checks and balances that are taking place by by our department.
Also, further discussion?
Sorry.
Only that, and I I want to agree that that this is laid out perfectly well. My complaint is that there are seventeen items, but we don't have receipts or backup for. It's not that the, it's not done well. I I analyzed it, it all balances, and appreciate him sending the summary sheet, CSV file, and extra work to make sure it reconciles properly. That'd be helpful moving forward as well, but it's the receipts that I'm, and invoices and backups.
Same, same issue.
I know.
But the schedule of values, and again, it's all, it's all, to your point, which you, the second point, which is, it all checks out.
Oh, it all balances. I just don't know what we're paying.
Just one quick thing. I did ask about the AMEX thing, because obviously when I see, you know, some credit card charges of note, I, you know, I did ask, and Doug did email back saying that three thousand seven eight nine thirty-one of that was for a three-inch hydrant meter backflow preventer and breast nipple required to provide temporary water during construction from the county-owned water system. And then the other hundred nine dollars thirty-nine cents was some Amazon is for the Jabba speaker phone. That's kind of the unit that we used to have before the owl here that they used to do all the calls and stuff and meeting stuff from the trailer.
So what you're saying is that you saw that there were, you identified an item. You saw that it didn't have the backup. You asked for it. You reconciled it. Doug provided, Harvey provided all the documentation which supported, which were materials as we anticipated, but you got confirmation.
Jude might have even asked before I did.
I'm good. Okay, so.
So why isn't it included in the warrant?
What I think happens is that what you see for the items down below or immediately following afterwards are all the, you know, it's basically the initial billing sheet or payment, application request slash invoice, that's the scheduled values. Then after that comes some of the, their own like internal internally purchased stuff. That's not from subs, or at least that's the order how they listed. So obviously, you mostly get the payroll items first more often than not. You know, that's the most, you know, expensive piece would be the payroll-related items, and you see all the individuals listed there. Then they might have some different purchases, but again, what stood out was about the, to me, about, you know, almost four thousand for AMEX. And then some of these, you know, that was also a newer item as compared to sometimes we see like the the trailer rentals. So you've gone familiar with with those that happen every time that there's a billing as well. And then they end up after, after the end of that, you know, the internal expenses, then they list the sub-expenses.
Just their organizational structure.
Yeah, they're going from basically the granular detail, roll up schedule values, and then that all rolls up to the application payment for.
Thank you so much.
Payment, that's.
Thank you.
I just, yeah, yeah, I'm just going to say, for the thirteen years that I've been affiliated with the county in some capacity or another, but I've known it to be, if there was a question mark in finance, that Chuck Nicholson would bring it up to the committee commissioners to let us know. Very thorough, so I have full trust in him. And it makes sense, so I'm, I'm going to file a motion on the floor. I mean, it's a popular vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Goddard?
No.
And I vote yes. All right, on to reports. Let me just work through it. Anybody want to chime in? Yep, please. I'm just going to say that we commissioners met last week for NHAC, and appreciate Commissioner Pro, gentlemen, zooming. It was one hour of conversation about dues and whatnot. Dues did up a little bit. Part of the reason, and I'll let Chuck and Chuck go with his. His side of things. He'll explain it a little bit further. And, you know, part of it's, we need to get some better speakers, so that line, that line is very complete.
And this is just another nod to Chuck, that he is, with respect to the Hampshire Association of Counties, Chuck does an outstanding job for the, for the association. You're, and I, I would say pretty much everybody in the state at the Association of Counties looks to Chuck for a lot of guidance and support, and I don't know how you keep everything in your head, but it's remarkable, and we appreciate you, and you're really a shining star for Rocky County, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, what else did anyone say? I had something else I was going to say, but.
Sorry.
No, 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 that's okay. I guess I'm going to just move on to the, any votes?
Okay, I move through the EVO's incorporated citizen month lease agreement for four postage meter bills quarterly at one thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighteen cents, effective on the date of installation, authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I just wanted to thank Leila for getting, being so proactive in terms of sending the contract to IMAX and making sure it's all vetted in the way we wanted it to be. There was a short, it was a short turnaround time, and we'd have something for us. Thanks, your efforts. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So we have a letter regarding proposed federal staffing mandate for nursing home discussion. I'm sure the commissioners have seen in their emails, the conversation from NHAC, the different counties about this. And one of the counties wants to be able to pull up, and it's asking for other counties to include their signatures and whatnot. So Leila, they had mentioned to them that we have our meeting, and then the commissioner will discuss it, so anyone have any, anything to do like that, discuss about this?
It it seems pretty obvious that we should be supporting the effort and signing on, to me. I think they're doing a good job identifying problems, yeah, that can be avoided. And I, everybody's in agreement. I don't understand why they even put this legislation through, but I think this is something we should support.
I mean, I think the intent of the legislature is to make sure that the nursing home residents are well cared for, and that's the reason why they want higher staffing, however, numbers, but the ratios that they're requiring is, makes it, I think we'll, couldn't have a really work against the nursing homes in terms of the being able to care for the residents, because staffing numbers are so difficult. So I agree, it's like, it should be signed on to this, because if we, if we're forced to comply with these, some of these ratios, it would be really quite difficult to get enough staff and challenges as it is.
It's an impossible task.
This is coming down from the president. That's his, that's his idea. I don't think it's a one shoe fits all type situation. Now, we realize what he's doing to New Hampshire. The counties in New Hampshire that run these nursing homes, so I agree that sending a strong message for all ten counties and saying, you know, do something about this. This is just no way, this is probably, so if, if no one has any, anything else to add, or think it's okay, then we can sign off on this and send that to NHAC, so we can include our audience.
Yes.
We'll do that. Thank you. We're going to move on to facilities, proposals, projections, when you publish the targets, they pay the automatically for switch replacement.
I move to reject the proposals received for automatic transfer switch replacement on generator and authorize republishing the RFB as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, secondly, discussion.
I don't have specific discussion to this. Only that the reason Jude's not here right now is that she is tied up with the water main repairment repair, so that's occupying her time, and that's why she's not present.
And I'll just chime in on this specific motion.
Yeah.
I want, I appreciate Jude's efforts in making sure that we get the best price, and I know that was where she's coming from, and we'll save money for the county by bidding this the second time.
Further discussion? No, the motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Human Resources amended COVID-nineteen required testing compliance policy.
I move to approve the amended employee COVID-nineteen required testing compliance policy as recommended by Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just responsive to the changing times and sort of the move out of pandemics.
I do have, I have one question. It said that we approved something on, in a November meeting, oh, twenty-three. We table this for a couple of minutes while I find that.
Yeah, well, I have some other discussion.
Okay.
If I keep looking, and then I'll come right back to you. Do you have anything, question point? So now on this side, and the policy, this is, I didn't get to read the whole thing, but my understanding is the policy changes for the mandating. Is that correct, Allison?
No, this is a separate policy. This is our infection preventionist bringing up to date with the CMS, CDC, and Health DHHS guidelines. This is driven from Jason and Lisa Hewitt, and so revising this to come up and bring it more into play of how things are happening right now structurally, operationally within the county.
It was, what it related to is testing requirements for unvaccinated individuals. And what it is, is just amending that, because now we're moving into under CMS guidelines, moving forward. There's no requirement that people be vaccinated in the nursing home facilities. So we're amending this to eliminate testing requirements, because as part and parcel of the second part of CMS, which is there's no longer a vaccination requirement for CMS patents.
Well, that's what I meant by amending, so I'm a little bit confused here, because so.
There's a secondary vaccination policy expiration that we're, you know, expiring, that's under Jason, but we still do testing, because we, just like the flu or some other type of disease, with the COVID, as you know, the screening is still taking place, and so they shouldn't be coming into the workforce if they're in that situation. They do have test kits that we're still getting from the state. They're providing it to us currently, and we have pushed those out to staff most, mostly over in the nursing home, but we have them available for any of the departments that want their staff to have testing kits.
Right, and directly from a long charter, we have, we actually put money in our for future testing as well.
We did, because we thought the state was going, and they did discontinue some support. Also, we had put money in for the, in case we were going to incur costs for doing vax clinics or whatever, just in case, because we knew the state was.
Right, right.
You know, at some point in time, that's going to stop too.
Commissioner Goddard, did you find it?
Yeah, I found it. No, Leila found it, pointed it out to me, and I recognized that I misread the date. It was November twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, and I saw our November of twenty-three, and I said, I don't remember doing that last month.
It didn't have to do with.
Right, so it was, I wasn't here, so.
So further discussion?
Leila's on the wall once again.
All of that.
Trust, trust it, sure. On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, exception request for long-term care.
I move to approve an exception request to personnel policy seven dash four for a long-term care services employee BB as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Service.
Second, motion for any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Long-term care services.
This is.
Oh, actually, long to COVID-nineteen vaccination mandate expiration.
And we'll terminate the requirements related to staff COVID-nineteen vaccination as a condition of employment as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
This is just part and parcel of the changing, changes to the CMS guidelines.
So, yeah, I just want to point out, for the record, I, when we mandated this, I'm not anti-vax, but I am anti-anti-mandate, and I was the only commissioner to not vote for the mandate, but she couldn't do it, although in fairness, Commissioner Goddard wasn't there, it's part of him being here. And then we actually did have that mandate. Unfortunately, we lost a couple of people because of that mandate, but it is what it is.
Just to clarify, the reason we put this in place is because it was CMS guidelines, which affects federal funding, so wasn't.
That's okay. The vote would have never changed for me. Like I said, I, you know, by principle, I couldn't. I'm not telling you.
The relevancy to it.
Yeah. Okay, so on the motion, any further discussion? Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Intellicare, LNA, LPN, RN, travel rates.
I move to approve the LNA, LPN, and RN travel billing rates for Intellicare and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Discussion? It's not on the motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Sheriff's Office request to apply FFY twenty-four mobile data terminal and eat trash.
I move to authorize the Sheriff's Office to apply for the federal fiscal year twenty twenty-four mobile data terminal and eat trash grant, which is seventy-five percent funded in the amount of twenty thousand sixty-one dollars, requiring a twenty-five percent match will be funded by the Sheriff's Office operating budget as recommended by Chuck.
Second.
No, this is the one that I think it's like a three-part thing that we'd be doing. So part of it would be within contingent grants itself. Part of it would be kind of coming from Sheriff's Office budget, but part of it would actually utilize that we've always budgeted still twenty-five thousand in the general fund, contingent grant line for the county's match, just in case we could keep on accepting grants that may not be fully hundred percent contingent. So that's where this will come into play.
That's.
So it's like a three-pronged thing to make the grant happen.
Like, like, there again, thank you, Chuck.
Yeah, Catherine emailed, and we.
We were able to, well.
Played it all out. I think Captain Walsh was on that email.
Yeah.
So the anticipation.
On the motion. Well, oh, I'm sorry, afternoon, I was going to say.
Yes, I was just going to add, so this one's, it'll, depending on where the grant goes, if it gets approved or not, just as a heads up. So due to the amount of the total purchase, we'll have to go out to bid, but in addition to that, we'll have what Chuck kind of calls a good news transfer is we have our money in our non expendable line, so we'll just have to do a little shifting of money, because the price is actually going to come in less than what we anticipated. So good news, but a transfer will come at some point as well, so few moving parts on this one.
And I think we dealt with that in long-term care last week, so, yeah.
Best undersheriff I've ever had.
On the motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, common head updates.
Nothing really due to report, but we did have Deputy Greeley. He was the top, he raised the most money for the CAC for the whole state of New Hampshire. So he raised over twenty thousand, and all the previous years, he's up to over sixty-seven thousand dollars, so that's an honor. I mean, Mike worked really hard, but B S for bucks, and CAC is a great organization. We're proud to support them. I know the county supports them, and hopefully, we can continue winning that big trophy we got, so that's about it.
Good job. I'm going to go, Chuck Nicholson.
Again, the usual work with grants going on. Seems like there is some, there's continued stuff going on, that ballot program grant. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Emily's dealing with with that, so it's being a little bit further drawn out, so.
Stay tuned.
Yeah, stay tuned on that. I'm looking forward to January. It's kind of funny you say I'm looking forward to NARCA filings, but.
I thought you were going up the cake.
After the budget passes, after the budget passes. But, but with the filing in in January for the quarter ending twelve thirty-one, we'll have our final grand total loss revenue, because that'll be our fourth annual county year installment. And so we'll be able to, you know, we'll come back to the board and see where we want to maybe adjust the alignment of certain allocated amounts by BARPA project.
And just on that, not to cut you short on that, but on just on the issue that Jude's working on now with that pipe, it's a surprise issue. We don't know how bad it really is, but, you know, it's something like that, that we could use one time, possibly, one time, use some other money to fix that role effect that.
Yeah, because there's a broad water, wastewater, infrastructure category, number five for expenditure category, so.
Continue.
This, again, just really busy. We did have our our office Christmas party the other day in this room, so that was, it was fun. You know, we actually, we had a swap. We had a swap and, and had pickup from the front row pizza, so.
Oh, nice. Everybody had a good time?
Yes, everyone had a good time. Just work on some year-end stuff as well. Katie Casey and I took advantage the other night to go to an event that our auditors were hosting to talk to them directly about our audits. And so Katie got a chance to talk to Scott McIntyre, who's the senior partner that works on our engagements. So he didn't want to get too much into it, because it was supposed to be a social event, but I've taken advantage, or took advantage of the May event to discuss business matters with them too, so hopefully, we'll see some progress there. I know that you're doing some remote work, the auditors are. Over the next couple of days, they should be dedicated to working on our engagements. So hopefully, we'll see some meaningful progress, so. And tomorrow, we do have the HAC meeting in Concord, so we'll be going over the the budget. Yes, there's significant increase, but only thirteen thousand total, which is being divided across ten counties, is coming from dues. A lot of it's because of the conferences going back up north to the Hotel Mount Washington, which is one of the more expensive places to host it in the, in the state, honestly. And also, we found that, for instance, the budget line for speakers used to be three thousand. You can even get a keynote speaker for three thousand, and mine speakers for your whole conference.
I'll speak with.
So that's another reason for it going up. Also, there's, the HAC is going to do a legislative conference at the end of February, I believe it is, when legislators in New Hampshire are on break.
Yeah.
And that'll be to go over some legislation from the point of view from the counties. And we have some speakers there to help hopefully educate our, or inform our representatives as far as what items are important to the county, maybe highlight some bills that are out there right now that have detrimental impact, or maybe also bills that we really support. And also, another event that happens every other year is that we do an orientation event, the HAC does, in, I think it's the fall. I think it's November, it must be December, mid-December, especially for incoming new members, because every other year, new House members are sworn in.
Right.
Some senators.
Right.
As well, and so that's an event too, that's six thousand dollars that happens every other year that people might forget when they're comparing, you know, twenty twenty-three's budget to twenty twenty-four, so.
Other than that, you get nothing?
Again, this, you know, Allison can go over some of the different, you know, union things that we're kind of addressing right now too, and, and we do look forward to negotiating with two unions in the upcoming year, so.
Thanks, thank you. I'm going to go, I'm going to go to Catherine Stacey.
Hi, Cat. Good morning, everybody. Not too much to report. It's kind of quiet over here. I do want to tell Commissioner, Commissioner Chirichello and possibly Commissioner Foyle to take a look at, there's a list of confidential bills that just went out. Two of them have to do with real estate brokers and real estate practice. So there's Senate Bill four eighty and Senate Bill five oh two. I don't have the, they have, they haven't released the, the backup to them, but I just want you to take a look at them when, when they do come out, because they may affect you. I'm not sure, okay?
And they're extended, excuse me, David, so in fact, real estate in particular?
Yeah, one of them is about brokers, five oh two, is specifically about real estate brokers. Okay, and the other one just is, is in general, just talk, all it says is about, you know, the practice, real estate practice. So it's, I'm not sure whereabouts it's going, but with a confidential bills, we want to make sure, and you should have all gotten a copy of. Not sure whereabouts it's going, but with a confidential bills, we want to make sure um and you should have all gotten a copy of the. Latest rendition of what we in this.
Uh.
Well over. Seven hundred bills Kate and I are reading. So just um stay tuned. And that's that's. Probably about it. Next Thursday, we're having our office Christmas party. Anybody's welcome to come over and join us if you'd like. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Um I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to Jason Snack.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh we've had uh four staff members test positive for COVID nineteen in the nursing home. No residents have been affected due to um. Contact tracing. Um we have also identified two staff members testing positive for um COVID in assisted living. No residents have been affected from that. Um the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid has published a final rule that ended the requirements related to staff COVID nineteen vaccination as a condition of employment. Thank you for approving that policy. So we are in line with CMS standards. Um in addition to that, we are on tr- track for the hospice suites. Um the projected completion date. Was provided to you and my packet to you all. Um and so we look forward to uh the completion of that on towards the end of February of two thousand twenty-four. Um we are also um provided with a hundred gifts for residents from Saint Anne's Parish. So we're very excited for their annual gift donation. Um so each resident will have a personalized gift package. Um from from the church. So we are very appreciative of that. Um in addition to that, we are looking at finalizing the carpet selection and lighting choices for the assisted living dining room. We've included our residents um on picking out different options, so we're excited to move forward with that project. We also received a fifty dollar donation from a um family member of a resident who passed away with us. And so I provided you a copy of the letter that was submitted and all the the great. Um this week uh actually um. Is on my work anniversary with Michelle Malanson Schmidt. It's my twelve years of having my. My partner, my sidekick work alongside of me, so I'm very honored and happy to be working with Michelle for the past twelve years. So. Um very happy about that. And then I also just wanted to say I appreciate you endorsing the uh letter regarding the federal staffing mandate. As many nursing homes are struggling with staffing, as many of you all know. Um the good news is our community, we really take pride in our staffing ratios and the quality of care, and we do meet that requirement. Um however, there are many communities that cannot, especially the smaller nursing homes. And so um this is definitely a a crisis. And um the disappointing aspect of what um I feel our president is missing with this. Requirement is that they're not including the LPNs. They're only including RNs. And LPNs is the primary workforce that we have in our community. And so without them, we would definitely not be able to do what we do every day. And so this requirement does need to be modified. That's how I feel about that. But anyway, with that being said, I hope you have a great day.
Gotta go to Superintendent Henry.
Good morning, everybody. Uh only a couple of things over here. Um current count is at one thirty-three, but I knew I was gonna keep going. A lot of releases this past week because it's right around the holidays. Um I'm also happy to report that our AB block is completely done. The showers are all updated. Everything's been painted and we have moved back the inmates off of our C block and we're able to close down a block. Um because moving the inmates back over, which is great because on AB block is the cells we put in to have the cameras and the. Plexiglass doors for safety purposes. So thank you to Jude and her crew and actually Officer Evans and his crew. It's been a lot of work over the past. Couple of months to get that thing all up and running. So that positive news. Uh uh Monday, I actually went down, I was on the opioid abatement committee, um and I'm happy to also say there. Presented forward was some money for um housing. Um I sat on a subcommittee for that group and made a recommendation to the full. Um uh committee to fund six million dollars a year over uh for three years. Or a possibility of extension for another three years for housing for those that are um suffering from addiction. And that's and the money's going to New Hampshire Housing Authority and that's all that money will be used for is some short-term housing, long-term housing. People will apply for, be able to, could be new builds, it could be buying other things. So this is gonna be. Uh that's huge that they've never had before. Um and goes to Governor Council next and we hope they support it because this will go very much a long way, especially what they openly abatement money was supposed to be used for. This is one of the high priorities, as we all know, i- is housing. So I feel very good and positive about that. We actually, I felt like we accomplished something because it's sometimes difficult figure out how to spend money correctly. And beyond that, uh over here, just that's what we had yesterday. We did have our little um admin uh Christmas party, Yankee swap and. Done very well, a lunch and people very happy. Staff's doing well because we have more staffing on than we've had in the past. Uh so that's going well and we still have other people trickling in and still applying. Adult diversion, we had a lot of applicants for that um position. We, I'd say we whittle down, we have ten solid candidates. And after the first of the year, we will start doing um interviews and get that position filled. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Um Allison.
Good morning, everyone. Um we have had interviews for the uh position that I have open in um. HR, we've had, we had a a robust pool of candidates. We we did all of those interviews and we have two candidates that'll. Do a walkthrough of the HR department and do a meet and greet with my staff next week. The wellness gift items, the beanies, the hats, they're gonna be distributed next week. They all came in, so we'll get those out to all the departments and their employees. Um we're down to ten evaluations that are due tomorrow, the fifteenth, that are tied to pay. So we can get those processed over to payroll. Um and that can be taken care of before year end. Um unfortunately, we were not able to um work around and getting a negotiation session together for either the Teamsters or the NCEU. Before the end of the year. So we are moving, I am in talks with both of those um union agents to work around some dates for January. And I will get that out to the union negotiation team as soon as um I hear back from them. The UKG project with dimensions and pro is going well. Uh the pro side for HR, we've been doing ongoing testing. Um it is related to the payroll side of things. Um and so um we are working through that. Um things seem to be moving around a lot quicker now that we have a dedicated group of individuals um with UKG that we deal with multiple times a week. Um we do have the SEIU MOU uh for there for the discretionary bonus today um to be signed. So that they that can happen for the the um that union population on the twenty-second. And um I think that is it. It's been very busy with the staff. We will have our Christmas celebration on Friday, the twenty-second. Um so we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Good thanks, Allison. Um we get, do we get everything? Good to be there, Catherine, or Major, or do you really want to say anything since you care? I'm gonna give you an opportunity. No, I'll say. Alright, maybe Leila. Leila, what do you got for us?
Oh, God, nothing this week.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for the for the updates. And we add to through business, old business, and anybody?
I just wanted to follow. You had the uh courtesy of providing us with this, your concerns about where there's a moving backup. And I just was reviewing it. So I appreciate the courtesy of providing this. Um but a lot of these things we've already talked about, drop one portables. Uh eleven dollars at Lowe's. Um we've talked about, we also, we've had um already had for Ferret Alec. Um he was doing uh for the work he was doing. Um TR Connell does masonry work, which is consistent. So. Um our general liability insurance, we know it's a just a portion of um the total and we got that. Again, a number of these things have already been asked and answered in prior weeks. The only thing I wanted to. You're you recognize that?
And I I recognize that. And I really don't think that uh the money is being misspent. It's a matter of, I don't have the backup paperwork and I think it's appropriate that I should get the backup paperwork specifically. Because as a commissioner, I've asked for it and it's being denied to me. Then that's really my point.
Okay. Any other new business? The only thing I want to add is I forgot to mention this. Um. I did speak with Superintendent Henry um on the special um. I mean, it's software or?
Apex.
Apex in particular. Yeah, I had um a news reporter inquire about it a week ago. Uh I did call Superintendent Henry. He thought it would be a great idea and kudos to him to actually set it up so that the commissioners could actually see it as well. Um and so on market calendars, commissioners for January eleventh, after our meeting. Um we'll invite the news reporter as well to actually see and see how this works.
Yeah.
So I wanted to bring that up. So I forgot to mention. So any other new business?
We have a walk-in.
Okay.
I move to approve an exception request to personnel policy seven dash three, new appointment for a long-term care employee MC as recommended by the senior director of human resources. And um it's human director of long-term care service, I'm direct, senior director of long-term care service.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna go to the, any color comment? I see you are brown in Zoom. I don't know who that is. Um to be in front of the public, but if you are and you wish to speak, now is your opportunity.
Good. Okay.
Last call. Anybody want to speak in public? Alright, we're done. We're gonna move on. So we are going to go into non-public.
My god, I moved to enter into non-public, potential nine one eight, call three two, personnel.
Second.
Motion made, second. On the motion, Commissioner Gogud?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yeah.
I vote yes. Everybody have a great day. I appreciate the updates. Keep up the good air, everybody. Okay. Hey, we're back. And Commissioner Foyle has any motion?
Of course. So we come out of non-public and then relative to those non-public sessions, I mute moved to seal. The um minutes indefinitely because it could render our proposed action ineffective.
Second, seconded, on the motion, Commissioner Gogud?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I move to adjourn.
Second. To adjourn and seconded, I'll give you a say hi.
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 Be out of turn.
Good.
Bye, Allison.